Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the National Board of Education's Human Resources Committee at the Nashville High School Boardroom. It is November 17th at 5:35. And would Mr. Johnson do the roll call?
Sure, Ms. Gil. Perfect tongue time. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Raymond is not here. Dr. Andre is here. Mr. Bowles is here. And we also have Mr. Gray and Dr. Scott Patti.
Great, thank you. Okay. Mr. Bowles, are you ready for your update for us?
Certainly. So if you turn to the update dated today, 11/17, job openings, we have a total of 52.5. The teachers hasn't really gone up or down. It was the 22 and 1/2 last week with 10 at the elementary level, 6 at the middle school level, and 6 and 1/2 at the high school level. We have a four-school psychologists we're looking for, five SLPs we're looking for, paraeducators, we still have 48 openings, all of which will be, are covered by contractors at the moment. Sorry, I had to wait for the train to go through. Food service, we have a total of five openings, which, again, I love that number going down. I'm hoping by the end of the year, we'll see that number completely gone. And food service won't even be on this anymore. But plan ops, we have a total of 15 positions. Four of those are custodians, 11 are crossing guards. We have one admin position open, which is the out-of-district coordinator, and we are currently fully staffed with these secretaries.
Great, thank you.
I do want to add one thing. We did repost the Director of Special Education. The current one that we have right now is in the interim position, so we do want to make strides towards next year to make that role a permanent role. So we do have that Director of Special Ed open as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Just with any of the teacher positions, are those any full-time classrooms, or are those all?
There are 11 and 1/2 special ed openings. There's a kindergarten at Lead Street that we're looking for, but other than that, it looks like everything is covered. Thank you.
Can I just clarify something? Sorry to hop in. So we have some contractors here that are in teaching positions as well, and then we also have some of our school psychologists that are contracted positions as well. So I don't think the numbers are reflective of some of those additional contractors that we have. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct.
Just for awareness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's take a look at tonight's personnel recommendations. Make a motion that we approve them as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on that? No? Okay. Anything else that anyone would like to ask?
I just want to add one thing. I know we did change the format of it. Is that all the information that you're looking for? Is that kind of what you guys like? Is there any more you wanted?
It made my day much easier.
Awesome, that is good to hear.
Pretty concise, and everything's there we need, so.
Awesome. If you want to make any changes, please don't hesitate to reach out.
No, it was nice to see the new format.
I'm sure we'll get Heather's input next time.
Next week, yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My meeting is adjourned at 6:38?
Record time.
Yeah, wow.
Five-minute meeting.
At 5:38, I'm sorry. Thank you. Wow.
Thank you.
It's great.
All right, everybody. Welcome to the Nashville Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, December 17th, 2025. It is 6:02 PM, and we're in the Nashville North Boardroom. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call, the opening statement? And can Ms. Gilio lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Okay, Ms. Darling?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Raymond is not here. Ms. Prin? Oh, she's not here either. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Lopez?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And then we have Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska, Dr. Scott Patti, and Ms. Gray, and then we have student rep, Ameen.
Shray will be here around 6:20.
Okay, I'll add him when he comes in. Let's see now, things statement. As elected officials, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us up to our first part of the agenda, which is a science presentation, so I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre to introduce. Or Dr. Scott Patti.
Yes, good evening. So in continuing our curriculum presentations that we've started this year, Patty Davidson and Monica Tino are our K-8 science coaches for the district, and they have kindly agreed to be here this evening and share a little bit about what's going on in science at the elementary and middle school level. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
All right, so we are in all of our K-8 science classes, teaching with the next-gen science standards and three-dimensional learning. All the students are learning to do what scientists do and engaging in all the science and engineering practices, and they get to learn what scientists know, which are the disciplinary core ideas, and they learn to think like scientists, which are the cross-cutting concepts. And there you can see the list of disciplinary core ideas, physical science, life science, earth and space science, and then we have our science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts. And these are, you have at least one of each in every single daily lesson. And all of our K-8 teachers are the superheroes of this work because they're the ones doing the heavy lifting and facilitating all of that learning.
So we feel fortunate to have Amplify Science for our high-quality instructional material for grades K to 8 now. So that has been quite the process of rollout. So you can see from this graphic that grades K1 and 2 are in their second year of implementation, grades 3 and 4 are in their fourth year of implementation, grade 5 is in their sixth year of implementation, and the middle school, 6, 7, and 8 have been using Amplify Science for seven years now. So yay! This slide shows us the vertical alignment, which is one of the great parts of using a high-quality instructional resource like this. As you can see, in grades K1 and 2, there are three units that works out to one per trimester, and then grades 3, 4, and 5, there are four units, so one a quarter. And then grades 6 and 7 and 8, where they have more time for science each day, they are doing six units, that's two per trimester. And the color coding shows you how, you know, the green is for life science, and the blue is for physical science, and then the pink is for earth-space science. So it builds, and there's some of each domain in each grade level.
So we thought we'd tell you a little bit about what our kiddos have been learning about this school year so far. Kindergarten's first unit was needs of plants and animals, and they were trying to figure out how some kids in a grove could attract monarch butterfly, monarch caterpillar, sorry, to their neighborhood. And they grew radish seeds to figure out that plants get bigger and add parts. They observed garlic in water and not in water, and figured out that, boy, plants do need water. And they compared sunflower plants that were grown in the dark and those that were grown in the light to see that plants really do need light.
And in first grade, their first unit, called Animal and Plant Defenses, was trying to figure out how spruce the sea turtle could survive after being released from the aquarium. And that was looking at structure and function. So they played a game about what living things need. They did a lot of modeling to show different kinds of defenses, like camouflage and shells and spikes, and they did some great work with language frames that helped them prepare to write awesome sentences.
And in second grade, they looked at plant and animal relationships, and they were trying to figure out why all the chalte trees were dying out in the Bengal tiger reserve. And so they played a dice game to figure out that roots need water and space. They tested their own wind-dispersed seed designs, which is a really fun activity. You can see that picture there with them blowing in the fan, and they observed a study site outside of plants in their habitat.
In third grade, their first unit was about balancing forces, and they were looking at how it's possible for train to float as an example of magnetic forces. And they did some great activities with magnets, learning about how magnets attract and repel, and then adding in the non-touching force of gravity, and were able to build actually a floating paperclip that used magnetic and gravity to figure out how a train can float.
That's cool.
And in fourth grade, they were figuring out how an electrical system works, and they did that with the phenomenon of Erg's Town. They kept having blackouts, and they're figuring out, why does this town keep having blackouts? And they have a great simulation on there where they can see how energy changes from form to form. You can see there, they use devices to see that they need electrical input, and they design and build their own wind converter in this unit.
And in fifth grade, their focus was patterns of earth and sky, and they found this artifact with a piece missing. So they were trying to figure out what could have been on that missing piece, and it was really about patterns. So they had to do a lot of modeling. They did some physical models in the classroom with movement, and then they also had a cool computer simulation model that helped them figure out about the patterns of suns, the sun and stars.
And in sixth grade, their first unit was on metabolism, and they were introduced to a girl named Delisa, and they had to figure out why she was feeling tired all of the time. And they have this great simulation there on the top left where they can add food or take away food, add extra oxygen or take away oxygen, and see how the body works. They investigated reactions, particularly cellular respiration, and they created a model within their class to see how systems work together in the body.
In seventh grade, they started off with rock transformations, and they were looking at how rock samples from two totally different places could be made of similar materials, and that was getting them to the idea of how rocks form and change. So they got to look at a lot of rock samples and then model how rocks are formed in a bunch of different ways, including using candy, everyone's favorite, not to eat, but just to model. And then in the simulation, looking at how energy, either from the sun or from inside the earth, causes rocks to change.
And finally, in eighth grade, they were in a unit called Force and Motion, and what they were looking at was this space station. There was a pod that was docking, and unfortunately, it missed the dock and didn't dock, and they had some footage of it, but there were some seconds missing. So they had to figure out, using what they know, what they're learning about force and motion, why it didn't dock the way that it was supposed to. So they do some readings, they modeled some collisions with their simulator online, and they did some investigations as well.
So that's just a little bit about what we have been doing so far in science this year. We look forward to continuing our learning. We're glad to have such an integrated approach. We've done a lot of hard work, and we still have a lot left to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty and Monica. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, thank you as well. That was fascinating. I love the, I need my Space NASA poster. I think I need to get that for my life.
That's your Google Classroom, correct? Is it? Yeah, with a lot of resources.
Ms. Gilio, then Ms. Prin?
I just wanted to add that my grandson is in third grade, was in the car the other day, and we were talking about train travel, and he proceeded to tell me about how pretty soon the trains aren't going to be on the tracks, they're going to be mag, and he described the whole process to me, and I had not heard of it before, so I was very impressed.
Awesome.
Ms. Prin?
This question is probably more for Mr. Andre. So I love the science stuff. As a matter of fact, we're getting ready to start force in third grade in my classroom soon. But is there information or a way to get information to parents, like, because I know it's amplified, do they have resources for parents, like a link we could put on our website? Because I was just looking through, just to see what was available, I just, so that parents know more than just on Open House, what their child is doing for the year for science?
Yeah, I'll see if I can, sorry, thank you, Ms. Prin, for your question. I'll see if I can pull it up here. We do have, it's a great question, because we've recently gotten up all of the curriculum resources on our website, so might be able to do a demo here if it cooperates. Give me one sec, but I can show you where those are. So it's the family newsletters, correct, that Monica and Patty helped to pull those?
I just, while we're looking for, just need to commend Monica and Patty for the years of support. And when I almost look at the chart of the eight years of implementation, where they've been really providing the resources, both to our teachers, our administrators, but also communications to our families. So it is there, and maybe we just need to pull it in more parent focus.
Publicize it, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's under Resources for Parents, Curriculum Letters and Resources, so it's broken up by section, as you can see there, and then within each, it has the subcategories. Okay. You can see it has those resources. For math and science, we already have it up in English and Spanish. We're, the translators are working on the Portuguese translations for us still. And then for literacy, I believe we just have it up in English for now, and we're waiting on the Spanish and Portuguese translations to come back from the translators for the literacy.
Okay, no, that would be really great, just for information for parents, just so that they know, they can access what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
I just love how hands-on everything is, you know, how much, you know, it's not just reading out of a book or, you know, writing down answers. They're actually doing these experiments to get the results, which is really exciting to see.
Okay, well, thank you guys so much for this presentation. It was enlightening.
Appreciate it.
All right, guys, that was, that was a nice way to start the meeting. I did want to take a second, though, before we move on, and acknowledge our past board member, Gloria Timmons, who passed away recently. I know that she has touched every single one of us in one way or another, and helped us all become better board members and advocates for our most vulnerable, so I just wanted to acknowledge that we're probably all feeling a little bit sad right now, but absolutely grateful that we were able to have the moment of time she was able to give us in her long life. So, thank you for that. And now this brings us up to our consent agenda, so I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm too tired, I guess.
And you can't, because you were, were you here the last meeting?
No.
Yep. But I don't think technically you're supposed to approve an agenda, or consent agenda, if you weren't there. Just a little factoid for you. Okay, so this brings us up to our first public comment period. Would anybody mind? Thanks, Jake.
Yeah, what's the other's? He must have missed.
No one signed up? Okay. Well, that brings us up to our superintendent's comment, so I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. A couple of quick updates this month. There was a successful Veterans Day parade with our musicians from our secondary schools taking part. Penachuk and the North and South Marching Bands represented the school district very well. I also want to update the board on our Welcome Center. We had a soft opening about a month ago. Things have been going really well. Families are making appointments for the appointment app, and I think really overall the welcoming to the school district, the paperwork, and the, how we envision the Welcome Center working, especially at the secondary level, has gone relatively smoothly. A couple of things that we're still learning along the way, there's a lot of solution-seeking going out, but the Welcome Center located at Birch Hill has been going really strong, so I encourage families, if they're looking to enroll or re-enroll, or need some resources to look on our webpage under the Welcome Center. I also want to thank our professional staff, our teachers, paraeducators, our administrators, Dr. Scott Patti and Mr. Poska, on a very successful professional learning day earlier this month. From the results, we've received many positive comments on how successful it was. So I think through the coordination of Mr. Poska and Dr. Scott Patti helped a lot. What we're noticing in this year is that it's, a lot is coming from the teachers, and having teachers learn with and from each other, either by grade level or small group, has been very beneficial. Fortunately or unfortunately, the last three years, we were kind of under an edict, edict from the Department of Justice on outside vendors coming in, and we're seeing a noticeable difference this year, where it is coming from our teachers looking at the data and organizing professional learning around that. So the first two professional learning days have been very successful. The attendance has been up, and the overall comments have been really positive. I also want to update the board on, to date, we've, our administrators have conducted nearly 2,000 learning walks through, across all the schools, and that's really looking at our instruction in the classroom. So at each level, they've been going in, looking at, again, what does tier one instruction look like? What instructional strategies are they seeing in the classroom? And then ironically, tomorrow, we have our all-admin meeting. We will look at that data, what are we learning from that, and then how do we support our educators in moving forward? One common thing that we're still seeing, and this is more on how do we move systems? So one of the questions that we ask for is around, what is the depth of knowledge that is being in front of the students? So DOK 1, 2, 3, or 4, and a DOK 1 is a basic recall to a DOK 4, which is more about synthesizing information, really taking it to the next level. And what we're noticing is a lot of DOK 1 type of learning going on, and even, and that's aligning to the level of what student work looks like. So our questions are, is that a curriculum issue? It's not a kid issue. It's not an instruction. So if we write our curriculum at a DOK 1 level, just kind of going back to the conversations a couple of weeks ago around our SAS data, if we see that we're not performing well on our state assessments, what does that, what's the correlation with our curriculum? So our learning walks are telling us a lot on what are our students exposed to, and that's going to lead to richer conversations about how do we move our system. So again, I want to commend our administrators for conducting nearly 2,000 learning walks and getting into the classrooms and collecting street-level data as opposed to waiting for that state assessment once a year. So these conversations are driving our PLC conversations as well as our curriculum conversations. So I want to commend again our administrators on that. And then lastly, on Wednesday night, we have our community forum, and being facilitated by Harriman Architects, and that focus is going to be around our master facility plan during that evening, 6 o'clock at Penachuk in the cafeteria. That conversation is going to be about how do we envision our schools for the next 50 years? So it should be engaging. They have developed an interactive protocol that night, so to ensure that all voices are heard that night. So again, community forum, Wednesday night at 6 o'clock at Penachuk in the cafeteria around our master facility plan moving forward. And lastly, I just want to, at this time of Thanksgiving, just really express my appreciation to this community, all of the educators and adults working with all of our students in our community for a very supportive environment that supports our kids on a daily basis. So thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Board response to superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Darling.
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Prin?
Thank you for the updates, and can I ask some questions?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, because you had mentioned that learning walks, who goes on those learning walks?
Right now, it's just administrators.
Okay. They're not evaluative learning walks.
They are not.
Okay. I say this as a teacher who has to have people do learning walks, and I don't like them, so I just wanted to kind of clarify.
No, they're, they're non-evaluative, and by build-ins, we will not report out on the data until there's over 50 walks, so that it's, we can identify what classroom. So we're looking for, really, the purpose is around looking at systems, right? And so it's not individual practice, but really, how do we change systems?
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. I wanted teachers to know that they weren't being evaluated.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Claffey?
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Good luck to Nashville South Football semifinals against Bedford this Friday.
Oh, yeah. South, right?
Yes.
Did you say south?
I believe I did say south. I hope I said south. I wouldn't want to confuse people.
I know. Ms. Gilio?
No comment tonight.
Ms. Lopez?
I just want to also take the opportunity, since this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, to say that I'm very thankful for the teachers and the administrators in our district, that, again, there's many things that set Nashville School District apart, and it is the community. So happy Thanksgiving to all teachers and the community.
Ms. Lampier?
I wanted to ask you a question, too, since Ms. Prin did. So I was wondering, you were talking about the depth of knowledge and how it might be a curriculum issue, writing to the curriculum. Is that something that you could use the AI tools that we have for, or is that something that would be unrelated to that?
Yes and no, yeah. So I think there's an aspect on how do we use AI properly, right? And so we can use AI for, into our assessments, but right now, it's really how do we get into our curriculum and what's the alignment to the Common Core standards? So for, like, that's what we're looking at. So we have our units of study, and then if we go into our units of study, I don't want to geek out too much.
Oh, please do.
But if we write our units of study only at the DOK level, which is like basic recall, then that's not a teacher, like, that's not a teacher issue, right? We wrote the curriculum at a low level, our DOK 1 level, and that's a system issue. So how do we go in and rewrite the curriculum that might ask for a DOK 2 or 3, and what's appropriate? So that's what we're trying to evaluate at that point, because the teachers are only teaching what we tell them to teach.
So it's, would be the admin that would rewrite the curriculum?
Or a steering committee, or a curriculum team that would kind of go back. So it's more about how do we move the system, and then, you know, we don't want to be, and some standards are written at... And then, you know, we don't want to be, and some standards are at the DOK 1 level, but we want to make sure that we're just not always swimming in that pool. How do we challenge our kids? But AI is a good conversation, but how do we use it appropriately, right? It shouldn't, there's an old, again, I don't want to, like, model, like a SAMR model, which is like, are we just replacing worksheets with AI? Or are we using AI to synthesize, analyze, construct, you know, critical thinking? So there's a proper way to use it that we actually might get into more of the prop engineering as opposed to asking AI, what was the, who won the war in 1812?
Okay.
You know, so that's a
All right, that's great.
A different kind of question.
All right, thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
AI has an answer in the form of Gary Hoffman. Okay. I don't have a comment on that, but this brings us up to our next agenda. Oh, sorry, this brings us up to student member of the board comments. Shayk, do you want to go? I know Shray had something to say when he gets in here. So we'll pause and get to him, but there's nobody to fight with this time. You get to go first.
Happy Thanksgiving. This is the second-to-last meeting of the year. So one more meeting for me, and then bye-bye. Yeah. I just like to say it's been wonderful being with all of you throughout the year. I've learned a lot about how this district operates. And I hope to be able to use it to help in the future.
Excellent. And we're always a resource for you if you have any questions in the future or if you need letters of recommendation or whatever you need. Reach out to us whenever. Okay, this brings us up to our Committee on Finance and Operations. So I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lambier.
Okay. All right, so let's see. My first motion is to approve the three-year contract with Siemens Industry, Inc. in the annual amounts of $11,640, $12,340, and $13,080. And that will come from the HVAC maintenance line in our operating budget. And it's just a small increase year over year. That's pretty typical, so.
Second.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the three-year contract with Siemens Industries, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cool. Motion passes. Get it, cool HVAC?
I'm sorry, I never get your jokes, Jen.
But they're so easy and funny.
Okay. All right, so the next motion, all right. So I'm going to make the motion to approve the special education contracts listed on the Finance and Operations Memo dated November 12, 2025, under their corresponding accounts.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And I just wanted to speak briefly about that, just so that the public will have some information. So tonight, we are approving seven special education contracts. One of these contracts, Regency Home Health, will be paid from special revenue. The others will be paid from Line 53628 Contract Services, and it will be offset from the money set aside for unfilled positions. All seven of these contracts are written within not-to-exceed amount. It is possible that the needs of our students will be less than what we anticipate. In that case, we will not be responsible for the full amounts of these contracts. The total of these seven contracts is not to exceed $1,755,215. If there are any changes in staffing needs, six of these contracts can be terminated with a 30-day notice. The remaining contract can be canceled with a 90-day notice. In addition, if any of the contracted employees decide to stay on and work directly for the district, we will not be liable for any fee or penalty for that. So that's a real positive. And hopefully, they will have a good experience at the Nashua School District and will want to work for us directly. So yeah, that's it.
Excellent. So all those in favor of approving the special education contracts listed on the FNO Memo dated November 12, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Before you jump to the next agenda item, I'm sorry to hop in. Do you mind just giving the FYI related to electricity? It's on page 45. There's no motion, but just from an informational standpoint, Mr. Smith had asked us just to make folks aware of the energy supply service. And if you want me to give an update, I'd be happy to. I just, you were in a good rhythm, so I didn't want to interrupt.
Well, yeah, if you can do the update, that'd be fine, because I don't, I'm not prepared, so.
All right, no worries. Okay. So this truly is informational purposes only. It's on page 45 of the attachment. So Mr. Smith has gone out for an RFP related to our electricity. We are hearing it potentially will be anywhere between a 20% to 30% increase. Based off of looking at some of the increases, the best thing to do for the district was to go out for an RFP to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and making sure that financially, we're moving forward with whatever quotes come forward at a competitive price. So we just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. In December, we will bring forward the RFP results. And then at that time, we'll make a recommendation to Finance and Ops. So I just wanted everybody to be aware that is in there as an FYI. More to come in the December meeting.
I have a question about that. Are we seeing a cost savings yet on our solar?
So we are seeing some for the December meeting. I can work with Mr. Smith to bring some of that cost savings forward, for sure. I'm not sure at this moment what the percentage is.
Okay.
But I can use that as a follow-up.
Yeah, I would just be interested to see if we're actually making an impact with all that, that work. Okay. Any other comments or questions about the skyrocketing electricity? Okay, thank you. Back to you, Ms. Lambier.
Okay. Mr. Ray, did you want to speak to the next thing before I make the motion, or?
Sure, if you want me to speak to it first before we make a motion on it. Okay. So the next agenda item that everybody has in front of them, and I'm just trying to pull it up with all these contracts ahead. Thank you. So this memo in front of everybody is from Dr. Andre and I to the Board of Ed and the Board of Aldermen. With looking at the expense increase to contract services, special education, and tuition out of district, we have been in partnership with the City of Nashua to take a proactive approach to go ahead and ask for some of the surplus money to be transferred into a trust fund for special revenue, excuse me, for special education. We have seen a substantial increase over the last several years related to contract services and out-of-district tuition. So again, based off of the partnership and the proactive approach with the City of Nashua, we are making this recommendation. I don't want to add any confusion, but as part of this, we would be looking for a couple of different components. One being a $3 million transfer into the Special Education Trust Fund. And then in addition to that, depending on where we end this fiscal year '26, we potentially might need to go into Special Education Special Revenue for some additional funds. And then truly, as we move forward as a district, we want to create a three- to five-year plan to be able to say, we understand there is a rising cost. How do we go ahead and budget appropriately for that to make sure our students' needs are being met? In addition, we're not coming forward every single year with an 8% or 10% budget increase. So I'll kind of pause there. I know that was a lot of details, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Any questions?
Are we open to talk about it? Because I don't think she read the motion.
I didn't, you wanted to make the, I'll make the motion first, if you like.
Because I think that you make the motion, then someone seconds it, then we talk about it? Or can we talk about it now? I just.
Well, I'll make, yeah.
You can do either one. I think we started off being flexible by talking about it.
Okay. So I really like the proactive approach, but I think that we should at least table this till the next board comes on, only because this is in direct correlation to the budget. And even though they've been working on the budget since September, we haven't heard anything about where things need to go. And as a board, it has been one of those things that we really, really need to talk about because even though we almost met the amount that was asked for last year, it wasn't something that turned out the way that we wanted it to. I really like the proactive approach of taking $3 million and putting it into an account. But also, even though it's a special education revenue account, we don't have any authority on what happens to that money once it goes over there. And it's not just about special education services because things like special education and ELL get put together, and that's how we got a welcoming center. So thinking about what this money could actually do, I think we really need to unpack it. I sat in on the FNO meeting, you know, I'm part of the FNO, so I've been thinking about it since then. I just wanted to say that I will go with whatever my board says.
So I just want to add some level of clarity so that there's no confusion. So this money that we are proposing for the city to put into our trust fund would be specifically only for special education costs, whether it's costs that we need to pay for in fiscal year '26, '27, or future years. The trust funds do not almost expire, I guess I would say. It's not a use it or lose it. So we are able to utilize trust fund money year over year. Unlike our operating budget, what is left over at the end does get returned to the city. I would like to caution everybody that if there is not a recommendation tonight to move this forward, that potentially could delay us not getting these funds. There will be a public hearing next week at the Board of Aldermen meeting. The Board of Aldermen are already aware of this. There are several other items going forward. With the unspent fund balance that is available, it's not only this $3 million that we as school are asking for, but there are additional items through the City of Nashua that they have identified as well. Then there will be a final vote at some point in December. I think it's December 4 that will determine whether we receive these funds plus the additional money that the City of Nashua is looking for. I personally, looking at the financials over the last year in partnership with Dr. Andre, the administration team, and the City of Nashua, the mayor, and the CFO over there, I truly think this is the right approach for us as a school district. Again, at this time, there is unspent fund balance. And I would just highly caution everybody that if we do not make a recommendation tonight, we potentially could lose this.
Mr. Claffey?
I just think if I counted right, there's five members here who will be on the board next. So if those five members vote yes, and I'm not speaking for you, but I'm assuming you want to table it. But I think if the other five who are coming back support it, let's go ahead and do it now.
Well, I'll make that motion. Does anybody want to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So just to, Ms. Prin? Oh, I thought you were. Yeah, so I agree with Mr. Gray in regards to beginning this process of getting the Special Education Trust Fund going. I think what we heard in Finance and Operations last week was that by securing this funding, we have more stability over our special education goals without impacting our bottom line to the taxpayers because it's something that doesn't need to go back to the city at the end of the year. It can sit there as essentially a savings account that we can dip into if and when we need it. And it's in a trust, so it has to stay with special education. It's going in front of a public hearing. So there is a lot of oversight with this. Whereas our budget, you're right, Ms. Lopez, where they give us a lump sum of money and then we do kind of what we want with it. But in regards to what we presented, this money stays in the trust fund and has to be spent on special education. So it's not as flexible as our regular budget. But if anybody has any other questions, shoot them off now. I'm sure the experts are here to answer them. Seeing no questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving the special education funding and expendable trust request and forward to the Board of Aldermen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Can I just add one other layer of maybe some support? So the trust fund, the agent to expend is the Board of Education. So what that basically means is ideally, we get this funding. We currently have a balance of about $240,000 in that trust fund currently. With that being said, we would have to bring the funds forward to Finance and Operations before we go ahead and draw down on the trust fund, where some of the other trust funds, the agent to expend is actually the Board of Aldermen. So it might be a little bit of a quicker turnaround process where the agent to expend is you folks, the Board of Education.
Okay, I just have one more motion left. It's a motion to approve the fiscal year '26 October transfer report.
Second.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fiscal year '26 October transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So this brings us up to our Committee on Policy. And I know Ms. Raymond is, am I missing something? Okay, sorry. The Committee on Policy, Ms. Raymond, is not here tonight. So Mr. Johnson is going to do his best to be, to be Ms. Raymond.
So we have a few policies to go over. We have our first policy proposed EHAG. This is Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence, AI. This may seem familiar because we did just introduce an AI less than a year ago, I think. So this goes into a little more detail of it. It's actually, part of this was taken from our initial policy and brought up a bit. So it's basically going over AI in the classroom, talks about AI resources, talks about the tools. And it also, the reason it's E for the policy is because it applies to everyone. It just doesn't apply to students. This also applies to teachers and administrators.
Cool. Is that the first reading?
This is first reading.
You'll go into more detail for next meeting.
Yep. So yeah, everyone get a chance to look it over and let Heather or myself know if you have any questions about it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, and with that, we're going to rescind IKLR, which is our existing AI. We won't rescind that until we vote on the new AI policy. Next up, we have IMDA. This is Silent Meditation, Pledge of Allegiance, and Patriotic Exercises. A lot of this was existing. We have added stuff to it based on what the state wants to see. It introduces some new things like where flags need to be displayed, that we have a General John Stark Day, which I confuse with New York Nick John Starks, but is someone else. And this is a first reading on this as well.
Okay, excellent, thank you. See a lot of red in there, so lots of updates. And it looks like lots of legal updates as well, so.
Yeah, a lot of this is from the state.
Yep, makes sense.
Next one we have is JL- Next one we have is JLCAA, which is Toilet Training and Diapering. This basically is addressing that when students enter kindergarten or whenever they enter school, that they have toilet training basics down. This has been an issue where we've seen over the past few years that there's been more and more students who are entering the school systems who are not adequately toilet trained. So the need for a policy presented itself.
Can I ask a question?
I know what you're going to ask, and the answer is yes. Go ahead.
Okay. So I was at the policy meeting, and I voted to forward this to the board, but anyone that watched it will see that I had like some concerns. And as I thought about it over this week, I have more concerns. So now I'm really not in favor of passing this policy, and I just wanted to give you some of the reasons why.
Sure.
As a public school, we cannot turn away children that are not toilet trained. This policy may give parents the impression that their incontinent child cannot attend preschool or kindergarten, and that is not true. Kids who are not toilet trained by the typical age may not be receiving adequate attention at home and thus have an even greater need to be at school. Children who have not yet been diagnosed with a developmental delay will not yet have an IEP. It's sometimes difficult to get a timely diagnosis. Some people wait for months for a diagnosis. So a lot of kids might fall into this category. And in addition, I would like to know who was responsible for changing a child who has an IEP but is not in the intensive needs program? Because the thing is that, you know, this policy that we have, that we have developed, it looks like it doesn't address the practical questions of who's going to change the child that needs assistance. And I think that's the information that the teachers, parents, nurses really want. We did get an email earlier today asking us to clarify that. So I just feel like the policy that we have is not going to answer any of those questions, and it could, in fact, keep some kids from coming to school who really need to be here. So that's why I decide I'm not in favor of it anymore. Thanks.
So this is obviously not coming to the board right now for a vote, but it'll go... This is maybe stuff that we can bring, that Mr. Poska can bring back and readdress because I think it is important to identify how we are going to be supporting the students who do have maybe unofficial diagnoses or needs at this point within the school district. So I think they probably just need some clarification.
I think we can certainly do that. One of the challenges that we talked about is, and again, I think that this is fine to delay this, but if there is a need to kind of get some more information and have a vote on this at the second reading, it would bring this into a January discussion, which is fine, but I just, and I think, you know, Ms. Lamphier brings up some conversations about what we can talk about, but I think as we talked about at the meeting is, you know, there's nothing in there about preventing a student from attending school. And I think one of the things that we talked about was setting the expectation. And I think over the last several years, particularly since COVID, there has been an increase in students who are not coming to school prepared in that nature. And I think that's been a tough task for members at the school level, whether it be some of our paraprofessionals, some of our special educators, some of our nurses. And I think overall, that is a concern. And I think within the context of this policy, it's about generating conversations with families about how, if there are concerns coming up, how are we going to address them as a unit? And I think that's one of the bigger messages. So setting the expectations and then working together to come up with a solution to address that going forward.
I see you guys over there. I want to add, I've actually been called about this a couple of times by special ed teachers and by nurses, who say there are no IEPs or 504s that say that they need to be helping these students, but they are. So I did a little bit of a deep dive in Milford and Hudson, and I believe Hollis actually have a policy like this. And we had nothing, and I was shocked to see that. So I'm glad we're having this conversation so that we can make sure that our staff and our students are getting exactly what they need in regards to why they need it, instead of just kind of rushing into kindergarten. But Ms. Darling and then Ms. Prynne?
I know for me personally, the only way I would support a policy along those lines is if it were to include what it is we as a district are doing to help these families, whether that's setting them up with support, setting them up with education. I can't tell you how many parents that I've met who try, are struggling trying to figure out how to toilet train their child when they work two jobs and are a single parent. That demographic is becoming larger and larger. So I think if we're going to sit there and say this is a problem and acknowledge that our staff have a right to not have to be doing that part of parenting, that we need to acknowledge it's a community issue and address how we're going to work on that.
Thank you. I think you're right. Ms. Prynne?
For Ms. Lamphier, I hope this is a clarifying thing for you, but I do know that sometimes kids who have a genuine health issue, like incontinence and caprices, they can have either, I'm assuming, I think it's accommodations like a 504, which can help some of those kids, especially if it's a health issue. But this definitely has to be a community issue because we've got to find a balance. I know when I worked in special ed preschool, I had to change diapers, and people were like, you have two master's degrees. What are you doing, changing diapers? So there's got to be a balance. But these were kids who were on IEPs for a reason, so it's definitely got to be something that we need to address as a community.
Ms. Daniels, Ms. Lopez?
I also disagree with this policy, the JLCAA. I am thankful that the thought of taking it back and adding the things that the board members are asking is something that we're going to do because I agree that every child that starts preschool, because this covers preschool, having to be toilet trained before attending school, that's a really high ask, and especially if they do have some of these barriers that were mentioned by some of the other board members. So I hope we really take a look at this, really, instead of creating a policy, create a help plan for those that, to address the issue that had came to the board about this because sometimes it is necessary to support children in a way that is necessary for that child if they're not potty trained. So thank you for all the comments.
I'm just going to point out that this is going to, this will go back to policy for a further in-depth discussion, so I would encourage all of you to go, or at least submit your questions, comments, suggestions to Heather or Rob so they can present it. But this is definitely not something that we need to be workshopping tonight. This is just a presentation that we will be discussing it, and it will be discussed again in the Policy Committee. Okay, Rob, next one?
Our next one is JLCF Wellness. This is a first reading as well. This is an updated policy. It's basically some minor policy updates to our, you can see the reds in there. So that's up for first reading.
Okay. Yeah, that looks like it's just updates.
Yep.
All right. So if you guys have any comments or questions or suggestions about that, I would suggest going to the policy meeting as well. However, I bet we don't because it's just changing some words around.
When is the next policy meeting?
No, it's not going to be in December.
No, yeah, we're not going to have December. We'll have in January.
January, okay. Thank you.
So it'll be the new board at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. January's already getting packed. Haven't even finished out the year yet. Chimney Christmas. Okay.
For the credit policy, is that just talking about school credit? Or are we giving credit for extracurricular activities as well? Because I know sometimes you get credit for like band and stuff like that. Just curious.
Are we moving on to the next?
Did you jump ahead?
We're not even there yet, so I think we should.
Did I jump ahead?
Yeah, we're still in the first readings.
Uh-oh.
We'll get there.
We'll get there, yeah.
Okay, on to the next one, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, next one. This one is second reading, so this is IHCA, which is an updated policy for summer activities. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Any comments or questions in regards to summer activities? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving proposed policy IHCA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next up for consideration is IJ, Instructional Materials. This is also just some updated stuff, so I'm making a motion to approve IJ.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Any comments or questions in regards to this policy? Ms. Lopez?
So I had a couple. Reading through here, it says like the board is responsible for these things, meaning that when we write the budget, we set aside money for the instructional materials, or we buy the subscriptions and things like that. But when it goes down to giving it, it doesn't say how it should be dispersed or anything like that. Like, as everyone knows, I have a real thing with making sure that the teachers get all the resources that they are allotted by building. So I didn't see anything in there, and I feel like this is that policy, that some of that should be written into there. I wasn't at policy, I was at the FNO before it. But is that something that should be in here? And if we do deem that that should be in here, should it be rewritten?
I'll hand it over to Mr. Poska.
I think to the point that, you know, when we talk about, you know, I'll pick on a, you know, in last budget season, we brought forth the fact that we were going to continue with CKLA and CKLA resources. It was brought there, and then once that was approved, we went through the process with the elementary principals and the ordering of those things and making sure those materials were then delivered to the schools. So I think from that standpoint, I don't think, you know, when materials or curriculums are approved, then it's up to our office to make sure that those resources are then allocated out to those buildings. I don't see that as kind of an issue with this policy, and I think we've been making sure, you know, constant conversations with the building principals about what they need. And if there are concerns, if an order comes in later or something like that happens, we work with the vendor to make sure the resources are then available to the buildings as soon as possible.
But that's why I was wondering if any of that would be here in this policy?
Where would you, again, where would you recommend putting it, and what would that verbiage be?
So not being on policy or writing policy before, I think that where it says, where did I? So like it has a list, A through J. Maybe some of that can be in there. So we're going to be in control of accessing information efficiently and effectively, maybe putting there dispersing properly. You know, I'm just, I guess, I don't want to pick it apart, I just thought that this was one of the things instructional materials should include more than just the subscriptions. And I feel like this one was just about subscriptions, so naming that, subscription materials, instead of instructional, meaning paper, pens, crayons, materials for the teachers. None of that is in here, and that's what I'm saying. If this is a policy that is over instructional materials, those are things that are part of instructional materials, just like the things that we learn today in science, all those things. Who's responsible for that? If you're saying the board is, there's no list of that being that this is a policy that will last for the next 30 years. If that's not what it's supposed to be, that's what I was just asking. Should this be that writing? Shouldn't it be?
I don't think it should, because if you look at the paragraph before, it talks about making sure that, you know, evidence-based and structural resource materials are given to administrators and teachers. So I think it's kind of understood that they have them there. If you feel more strongly that there needs to be explicitly stated, I think that's up to the board to put that into play.
I also think one of the things that we did add was if you look where it says each school's instructional resources should be organized and accessible to students, staff, and parents, and managed through circulation policies and procedures that are designed to maximize the use of the resources. I mean, that's part of what we're updating here is to address, you know, where these instructional resources should be available and organized and accessible.
I think to Mr. Johnson's point, this is really more about the curricula-related resources, not paper, pencils, crayons, et cetera. So it's more related to the curriculum.
Thank you for the clarification. Like I said, I was just not sure if this was where it was supposed to go, but knowing that that's a concern and reading the whole thing, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy IJ, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, now we get to the good one, right? Making a motion to approve a policy IK, earning of credit.
Don't we talk about it first?
Well, somebody needs to second it first.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Now it's open for discussion. Go ahead, Trey.
Sorry, I just had a question about this one. Is this just referring to credit as in the credit that's gained in schools, or do we expand that to include some extracurricular activities as well?
I think specifically, Trey, what this is referring to is, as part of the state's ED 306 updates, they've changed the requirements for credits going forward. So overall, the credits necessary to graduate have been updated in breaking up what those credits are. So I think when you get in there a little bit, and then when we talk, you know, kind of previewing going forward, when we talk about the program, a studies presentation that's coming up in December, the number of credits, for example, we'll pick on history, has changed slightly to also include New Hampshire history as part of it, as well as a civics component, which is in there. So overall, how, looking at the credits and how that whole, the credits are given in the content areas, has been updated a little bit. There's still the opportunity to receive, you know, extra credits for your electives, also for kind of what the Learn Anywhere type of opportunities. And I think even in that first policy that we passed just recently, talking about if there's opportunities to do work over the summer for credit, that's there. I think all it is, is really just kind of delineating what these updates are for ED 306 and just making sure that we're in alignment with the necessary graduating, graduation requirements for the credits going forward.
Awesome. Now, on that, I just have one question. These new requirements by the state, is that going to affect some of the alternate opportunities we give students to complete our credits? For example, for US history, not everyone has the space in their schedule to take that in person, so a lot of people take that on V-Lex. Is that still going to be offered through this?
I think the requirement is still there. I think one of the things that we're talking about, you know, you picked on history, which is, you know, probably a good example to talk about. How we're embedding a lot of those requirements in our history. So we're not creating a standalone New Hampshire history class. We are embedding the New Hampshire history requirements in our current US history class. So I think overall, you know, probably a slight change in kind of updating some of the expectations in those curriculum, but we're not adding new curriculum, and it shouldn't impact any of the other classes that you're taking, particularly if you're taking a V-Lex class online.
Awesome. Thank you.
So what I'm getting from that is that basically our graduation, like credit requirements, they won't increase or decrease, but we'll just have some slight changes within our classes.
Slight changes going forward, I think. You know, the amount of credits is about the same, but how, you know, I think rather than, you know, three English credits, I think it went to three and a half English credits. So overall, you know, I think you're still going to graduate come June. I feel pretty good about that. I think going forward with some of, and just making sure, you know, as you know, when you were a freshman, you know, looking at that path, what are the required courses that I have to take going forward? This allows our councils to start putting together that plan going forward and what those necessary classes have. those necessary classes have to be.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, you guys did a good job updating all of this, that was a lot of new stuff. And while I am all for change, I hope we don't have to do this again in two years.
Agreed.
So all those in favor of approving policy I K, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I just have a small question for Dr. Poska. When does it go into effect? I know that it's not gonna affect this year, but now we've accepted the policy, when does it actually go into effect for the freshmen that are coming in for next year?
Particularly with the going, I think when you see, that's a great question, when you see the program of studies coming forward, you're gonna see some graduation requirements that vary a little bit by graduation, graduating class. So I think it's, you know, we're meeting with the head counselors at both of the schools, it's gonna be a little messy per year as we get through this, but some of those expectations are currently in place because of the E D three oh six update. So this is a matter of us getting in alignment with that going forward, which is kind of one of the things we've talked about over, you know, this, you know, fall. All these updates came forward over the summer and how we have tried to kind of present them to the board so we can get them in place.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Next up is a motion to rescind policy I K A A interdisciplinary credit.
Second.
And this is basically because now we have I K, so it becomes redundant.
Okay, any comments or questions about rescinding this policy? Seeing none, all those in favor of rescinding policy I K A A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next up, we, motion to rescind I L B A A, high school competency assessments.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Comments or questions in regards to this policy? Seeing none, all those in favor of rescinding policy I L B A A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And continuing out with the same theme, I am making a motion to rescind I M B C, alternative credit options.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Comments or questions about this?
We're just doing this because it's all incorporated in the other one we passed, right? Just making sure.
Yep, absolutely.
Redundancy happens in government far too often. We like to get rid of policies we don't need anymore. Okay, Mr. Johnson, is that it?
That is, well, we gotta vote on that one.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor of rescinding policy I M B C, wait, that's my run?
Yep, I M B C.
Yep, I M B C, sorry. I scrolled all too far. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next up is, I'm making a motion to approve policy I K R, competency assessment regulations and procedures.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Comments or questions in regards to this? Mr. Claffey?
Are there any changes? I see the highlighted, but is that a change?
Nope, I think to that, we wanted to keep I K dash R there. We've reviewed it, it's still in alignment, and I think it provides a lot of information about levels of proficiency, the descriptors, and kind of how grades are inputted into X two. So no updates, but again, just because we updated I K, we are now making sure that I K dash R has been reviewed and it's aligned, you know, again, no changes there, but I think it's just important to know with all the other changes that this still isn't aligned with what we're currently doing.
Good. Any other questions? Go ahead, Trey.
Yeah, so for this, the four-point conversion that we see on the third column, that's unweighted, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and for that unweighted, the A plus I see it's four and A three point seven five, on and on and on. I know in a lot of other places, they have an A plus being four point two five, an A being a four, dot, 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 so they do it like on a four point two five scale. Have we considered that option for our students? Because I know it does play a part in college admissions as someone that's going through it right now.
I think about two, three years ago, we had a significant discussion about going to a four point oh scale, which is why we've kept this in here, because I think to the point that was before, we did have a variation in that scale, but as of right now, we are now all on a four point oh scale, so we've kept it as is.
Okay, as long as it's been brought up.
Oh, yeah, that was years and years and years and years of board fun. But you should know, when you go to, when you submit all of your information to different colleges, they're gonna reweight your grades anyway. So what we give you here is a jumping off point for...
No one's judging me by a number, I know, it's not that serious. I'm just wondering.
It's, I feel like it's, I have like a PTSD response to discuss.
Right, absolutely. It's like, oh, I've been through this.
Right. Like, no, this is what's happening. Very defensive. Okay, so this brings us up to our, is this the last one?
Vote on that one.
Oh, my gosh, I keep jumping ahead. So all those in favor of approving policy I K R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sorry.
Okay, next up, proposal, making a motion to approve policy I K F, high school graduation. This is where we get into where we have all the information of what, back to the state, what's required now for all your credits to graduate.
And again, to Mr. Johnson's point, they've, you know, just the academic diploma that a lot of students is now twenty seven credits. The minimum standards diploma is now is twenty credits. I think to the point that was made prior to that, I think you can, as you scroll down, you can see kind of some of how some of the graduations requirements vary by class as we move forward. So you see some of those updates here in this policy. Again, it also breaks down kind of how that has to be broken down by by content as well. So again, all part of the E D three oh six update, so this is in alignment. Again, when we have the program of studies update, you'll see this embedded in there as well.
Mr. Claffey?
And Trey, to your thing, I was just gonna say to your thing earlier, you'll see that the, where things come into effect, where academy, academic awards for classes of twenty four, twenty five, twenty six has that three point seven to five, and the classes of twenty seven has a three point seven to four for the, both for the summa cum laude.
Okay. Mr. Claffey?
The, when I look at the list of courses and credit, credit requirements, the second group for next year's freshmen, so I'm looking at the second, this is the state minimum, right? These are the state minimums.
Correct.
Are we still gonna require four in English, as far as you know?
Yes, so this is, but we do have students who go for a minimum standards diploma.
Oh, sure, sure, I'm just, so this is, I guess I looked at this and saw three and a half in English, and I thought we did more for the standard diploma, so this is not for the standard diploma.
Correct.
Just the minimum, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lambier?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize I was raising my hand. Did we get a second on that? I can't remember.
Yeah, Mr. Claffey.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Claffey did. So Mr. Johnson, then Mr. Claffey did.
Thank you.
Okay, this is another one of those things where I hope we don't have to come back and readdress this every two years. Okay. Just, it's a long one. Okay, so all of those in favor of approving policy I K F, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And with that, we are going to make a motion to rescind I K F A, early graduation.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Any comments or questions about this? Seeing none, all those in favor of rescinding policy I K F A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Okay, now I'll make a motion to, for policy I K B, homework.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pryn. Any comments or questions about homework? Ms. Lopez?
So I think homework is important. I'm not gonna to agree with this, but that's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions?
Ms. Bishop, if I could just...
Go ahead, Mr. Poska.
One of the conversations that we had the last policy meeting, and I think we had a good conversation about it, was kind of some conversations about some of the religious holidays and how does that information get shared out to staff. I just wanted to clarify that from Dr. Andre, each year, a memo was sent to all the principals kind of detailing some of the, a list of the Jewish holidays that are there. I've worked with Ms. Cancela, and I'm just passing around some of the, and looked at some of the other districts and what they share. So I've, you know, created some updates that we could also, again, this would not be part of the policy, but I think it speaks to some of the concerns that were addressed, how is information shared? So kind of, again, looking at a variety of other school districts, what information do they share regarding some of the holidays? So push this out there, and this is something we're considering going forward, but I did wanna make sure that the board is aware that Dr. Andre does send out some communication at the beginning of the year to all principals regarding those holidays.
Ms. Pryn?
Thank you for that, because that was my...
Right, I remember that.
...concern, yeah.
I would also mention that I would encourage with this that any parents who have religions that are not, you know, common, or that you belong to a certain sect that may be orthodox or something, that you do, talk to your principals and teachers about what your specific student's needs are for their holidays, and, you know, the teachers will be able to work with those schedules.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. So any, everybody, so all those in favor of proposed policy I K B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's go back to the...
And I'm done, right?
I know, how did that feel? Was that a lot?
No, that was, that was good, that was, that was a good run.
That was a good run. Okay. Any updates from C and E, Ms. Pryn?
No, because I've been spending a lot of time with policy.
Okay, good. Okay, this brings us up to our Committee on Human Resources for apparently what was the fastest meeting that's ever been held. Ms. Giulio.
Okay, I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the H R meeting held earlier this evening.
Second.
Thank you, okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And now I'm recommending, I'm making a motion to approve the personnel recommendations of November seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, or any comments or questions, sorry. No comments or questions? All those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations of November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have no unfinished business. Our new business, I will hand over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. In your, this is more for informational purposes and discussion, but in your packet, we have our official October twenty twenty five enrollment numbers. And just from a high level, you could see the difference in our enrollment numbers from twenty four, twenty five, from two thousand and twenty three to twenty four. So our official numbers of the district total of twenty, twenty four, twenty five, we have nine thousand seven hundred students last year. For twenty five, twenty six, we have nine thousand five hundred and one students. So we've, overall, this, I don't know how it worked out this way, but it's exactly a decrease of two hundred students at the elementary level. We saw a negative enrollment of seventy three students. At the middle school, we are down fifteen students, and at the high school, we are down a hundred and twelve students. So this is, again, in line with the projections of our overall enrollment, seeing a decrease in our enrollment year over year. So, you know, this goes into how we start budgeting for next year, and also the numbers will go into our adequacy aid, so we'll see an impact there as well. So again, I think just, these numbers are just a reflection, and we've seen it forecast and foreshadow over the last couple of years of a declining enrollment in the school district. Some of it, it's, again, we haven't seen huge numbers in charter schools or parochial schools, but overall, over the last couple of years, the birth rate and housing has had a huge impact on our enrollment numbers. So it's in your packet, if there's any kind of questions, but you can see the impact across the different schools. You know, one thing that stands out for me, coming to this district in twenty twenty two, I remember scheduling Fairgrounds Elementary School, where we were well over five hundred students, we were like well over like five hundred and twenty five students. We were in that neighborhood, same thing with Bicentennial, we were, you know, in the five ten, five twenty range. Bicentennial this year has four hundred and seventy three students, and Fairgrounds Elementary has four hundred and twenty five. So those are major differences over the last three years in those two schools alone. And then the other one, the other schools, we see some relatively subtle changes, but over the last three years, we've seen drastic changes in our enrollment data.
Is this more reflective of students leaving the district, or just the next class is smaller than the one before?
Yeah, so if we just see the, it's more the birth rate of our, you know, K students year over year, if you follow that cohort, it'll be a smaller K class, and that would follow all the way through. We've reported out over the years that we see a change in our fifth grade to sixth grade, so even if you look at our fifth grade numbers, you know, it's six hundred, you know, six hundred and eighty seven students were in fifth grade last year, and then this year there's six hundred and forty students. So what happened to those fifty students? So those students traditionally have gone to a charter school or a different choice, but we also see the increase coming back in ninth grade. So it's a couple of years of students exiting the district and then coming back in ninth grade. We did see an increase in, or in students returning in the middle school last year with the opening of Makati. It was interesting, I was there one day, and there was an enrollment specialist from one of our charter schools, and had about twenty twenty five students returning from our charter schools back to Makati. So, so we are seeing some return of our students at the middle school level, but I think in our strategic plan, how do we plan forward to stop some of that loss from fifth grade to sixth grade?
Now, does this, I just have one follow-up about the returning charter school students, did they return prior to the enrollment number, so we got the full amount per student?
Yeah, it happened over the summer.
Okay, that's good, because we don't need to lose that money to students who are gonna come back in six weeks anyway.
Yes, that's, that's good news. So I was just wondering, there's a couple of the schools with the enrollment went up, and I was just wondering how those schools are faring as far as crowding or anything like that, are they all doing okay?
Yeah, so again, at the beginning of the year, I think we went over our class sizes, still class size numbers. The building principals last year in our budgeting process did a really nice job making sure that our class sizes were appropriate, so I still think we're in pretty good shape, but again, we'll be going through the same exercises as we planned for next year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Lopez?
So I know that we've had a lot of initiatives on, you know, rebranding, getting our Facebook page together. What are we, what are we doing, and is there anything that we can do to bring the students back that have already been born to the district? Because I know some of it, like you said, is the birth rate, the housing, but the ones that have originally come to our schools, is there any initiative on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, when we looked at our strategic plan, I think over the next five five years, as those community conversations on, what are our parents looking for, our families looking for? So I think it's a lot of community conversations about, you know, why are students leaving, and why are they coming back? So I think that's in our strategic plan, so that we're proactive in that approach, you know, and other, different kind of conversations that families are looking for. So that's in our strategic plan, and again, we'll start having those conversations as early as Wednesday night with the community forum. In those conversations, so.
Just to follow, will the strategic plan be posted before Wednesday so that it can, other people can see, see if they're interested in coming to the meeting on Wednesday?
So we've been posting that out on, it's been on social media, it's on our website, inviting people. Wednesday night is around the facilities master plan, not the whole, right. Right, so in the facilities master plan, through the protocols, we'll be asking the community members on how do they envision our schools of the future. So that's going to be the focus for Wednesday night, not the entire strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you. I think the public should be very excited.
Okay. So that's it for new business. You didn't need any votes on that, right? I didn't think so. We vote to, this says 12,000 students.
Change the adequacy rate?
Yes. Although I guess you're not supposed to lie on your budget. It's frowned upon, can't lie about the amount of students we have. So this brings us up to, do we have any liaison reports? JSSBC? That's this Thursday, but we've already had a meeting since then. Okay, so I think this brings us up to our last public comment period. You got the memo.
I thought he was going to have to speak at the podium.
No, we tasked the students with getting the, they said they are young and nimble, and they can jump in and out of their seats a lot faster than we can.
They sure can. Shreya's still going to get to make his student comments, right?
Yes. Do you want to make your student comments before we start board member comments?
Why not?
Okay, thank you. All right, second public comment, three minutes each. Steven Skare.
Good evening, Steven Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm here to respond to board member comments from your last meeting. First, there is no such thing as a transgender child. These are girls and boys struggling with autism, trauma, and depression, who are being deceived and exploited. If you believe otherwise, tell me plainly what a transgender child is without resorting to lies and ridicule. Jennifer Bishop, you mocked me by suggesting that my research consisted of scrolling down that Google search and laughed. You lied. I read the research, I read the studies, and I invite you to discuss it with me. You also said, "I'm so sick about hearing about children's genitalia." No one mentioned children's genitalia. Check the transcript. You lied to smear us with a lewd insinuation, and it's cruel to speak so lightly about children's genitalia when so many young people suffer chronic pain and sexual dysfunction from puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones. Mr. Claffey said, "Read about the Dutch studies, how that's been discredited." If he had read about them, he would know that Dutch studies documented experiments where doctors used social transition chemicals and knives to try to turn girls into boys, and the boys into girls. And of course, they've been discredited, that was my point. He said, "I don't think our nurses are providing puberty blockers. Certainly, teachers aren't performing surgery. Nobody said they were." By teaching students that they might be in the wrong bodies, Nashua schools groom other people's children for medical experimentation with their gender-bred persons, progress flags, GSA clubs, hallway displays, and anything but safe spaces. I appreciate his comment. I didn't hear anything about the L, or the G, or the B, just the Ts. The LGBT Courage Coalition and Gays Against Groomers are fighting gender ideology in schools because this cult targets gender nonconforming children. They consider this the cruelest form of gay conversion therapy. None of you has found the courage to talk to me directly instead of mocking me among yourselves, although I've consistently invited you to do so. I hope that parents see how entrenched you are in this destructive and incoherent ideology and protect their children. If you wanted to learn more about what's happening with gay people fighting, The Wall Street Journal earlier this month had an article, "The Growing Divide in the Rainbow Coalition: More Gay People Are Speaking Out Against Gender Ideology of Trans and Queer Activists." Again, I invite you to discuss this with me personally, especially instead of making fun of me or misrepresenting what I'm saying among yourselves. Thank you.
Beth Skare?
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I asked for feedback from parents about the board's comments on the parental bill of rights policy. Here's a response from a mom who has sent her children to Nashua public schools for many years, and her youngest is still in the school system. Whenever children used a different name at school, and the teachers ignored her request that they use the child's given name. She said, "What I would say is that their responses are disgusting. Whether we can trust how these adults respond and guide our minor children is the bigger issue. These trusted adults should not be allowed to socially transition our children. This policy is not about parents knowing or not knowing, but parents having a say in how our individual students are addressed when they are at school. These conversations should not be taboo. If a parent does not like the responses, they have options to seek alternate education. It's insulting to think parents don't know what's going on with their child. That's not what this is about. It's about knowing how the trusted adults are responding to the children. It's about parents having a say in what happens while their child or teen is in school. Trusting parent, trusting adults blindly affirming is not harmless to the development of young children and teens. If they're going to side with anyone, they should be siding with parents. Developing teens are known to push limits, and adults should be holding safe limits. Parents should not be seen as the enemy. The public school system will continue to see declining enrollment if they keep demonizing parents." Here's another response to the board's comments from a New Hampshire father. "The comments from the Nashville Board of Education in its recent meeting about the parental rights law were breathtaking in both their ignorance and their mendacity. I made the mistake of allowing public schools in Litchfield to educate some of my children. Teachers in the Litchfield School District deceived us as parents as they changed my autistic daughter's name and pronouns without my consent. My daughter, who is now 22, has been taking testosterone for two and a half years, in part because of the deceptive actions of Litchfield employees. In addition to the destruction of her beautiful singing voice, my daughter has had consistent liver troubles ever since starting hormones. She's at an elevated risk for liver cancer, stroke, heart attack, and infertility because of these hormones. The teachers who contributed to this will, of course, not be there for my daughter if and when her health declines in the future. It will be us, her parents, the kind of people the Nashville Board of Ed has disgracefully derided, who will be there for her because we love her more than any teacher or school board member ever will. I know my story won't move the members of the Nashville Board of Ed even a little bit, even though there are probably dozens of Nashville parents now living my reality. The Nashville Board of Ed would rather see the destruction of families and of young people's health than admit they were wrong. Shame on every Nashville Board of Ed member. In my response to Rob Johnson's comments, they're trying to force their beliefs onto other people's children. We are speaking up for parents who want their kids to be protected from teachers and administrators who wish to interfere with their children. They aren't your children. Leave the kids alone."
Thank you. It's now time for board member comments. We can start off with Ms. Darling.
I came in tonight wanting so badly for tonight to just be easy. I'm speechless at the moment, so have at it.
No comment.
Mr. Claffey?
No comment.
Mr. Johnson?
So what we do here is we work for parents, for teachers, for students, and we recognize their issues and their problems, and we're here to help. To accuse a board of dismissing parents, or to accuse a district or teachers of being dismissive of parents, is totally missing the whole idea of education, the whole process, the whole reason that public education exists. We support parents, we support teachers, and we definitely support students. And as a parent of a student who chooses to identify by a different name, who had teachers support that, who had fellow students support that, who has their brother support that, and their extended family support that, is a wonderful thing. They are now in college, with a college that supports transgender students, that supports members of the LGBTQ community, and allows them to be who they are. And that is the most important thing we can do for our children, is to realize who they are and what they want to be, and be supportive of them as they take this journey into adulthood.
Ms. Gilio?
No comment.
Ms. Lopez?
I'm thankful every time I come up into this horseshoe to be able to support the children, the teachers, and the community. Faith, family, community is all that I stand on, every, every single day.
Shreya, do you want to do your comment?
It's not really relevant to the subject at hand, maybe after everyone else is done.
Well, we can, we can make any comment we want. It's not just a response, so.
Okay. Yeah, so this isn't relevant to the comments made earlier, and I feel kind of awkward bringing it up now.
It's okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that my, the past year on the board was a very nice experience for me, and I'm a junior right now, so is Shayk, so.
Junior.
Aw, hon. That was a Freudian slip. You don't want to leave us.
I'm a senior now, and so I'm ineligible to run for reelection. I can't. So last week, I gathered everyone, all the sophomores and juniors of Nashua South, and I told them all on, through Google Classroom, that whoever is willing to run, and whoever wants to carry this forward, I'll hold a information session. And we had around 10 people show up, and they're all good candidates, so I think you guys will be having someone fun just like me next year. And yeah, I hope, I hope they do the same, I hope they do a better job than I did, so thank you, guys.
Hi, oh my goodness. All right, it's my turn now. You guys have been incredible. You've both brought a lot to the board. You've made changes that we, I mean, you've both challenged us in a lot of different things, and definitely things have changed because you've been here. So don't ever, you know, think that you're not making a difference here. We're really glad to have you, and we will miss you next year. And of course, we wish you all the best. And sure, you're going to be having a lot more fun off in college than you are here with us.
I don't have any comments. I have comments, but sometimes we don't need to breathe oxygen into fire. So I, Ms. Darling?
I did get my voice back. If you want to go first, I know sometimes you like going last.
I was, I was just going to wrap up the meeting and then ask for a motion to adjourn, but go ahead, Ms. Darling.
I realized I can't go home without saying something about the comments that were made because what I heard wasn't concern for children, it was a complete dismissal of their lived reality and a fundamental misunderstanding of how gender-affirming care works. Trans children do exist. They exist in our classrooms, our communities, and every corner of this country, and pretending they don't doesn't make them disappear, it just makes them less safe. The idea that teachers should out a child the moment they express anything about their identity is not just harmful, it's dangerous, and it's not what our policy says. Schools are often the only place where some kids get to feel safe enough to say who they are, and if a child isn't ready to talk to their parents, forcing that disclosure isn't support, it's coercion. As for a comment about a child being on testosterone, no teacher, no school board member, no random belief puts an individual on HRT. That process involves parents, medical professionals, multiple evaluations, ongoing oversight. It is not an overnight decision that somebody makes, and the parents are involved in that. Reducing it all to a fault is not only incorrect, it's insulting to the professionals who dedicate their lives to doing this work responsibly. We have a responsibility to protect all students, including transgender students. Part of that responsibility is making sure that they are not erased, dismissed, or weaponized in public comment periods. I'm disgusted, and I don't use that word lightly, by the rhetoric that it treats real children as these political talking points. Our job is to keep kids safe, not rewrite their existence to fit our narratives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. I do want to just read one quote from the all-loving Mr. Rogers. "The greatest thing we can do is to help somebody know that they're loved and capable of loving." And with that, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned at 7:45.